Ms. Chi, could you provide us the official roll call? So that we can establish quorum and we'll proceed with business.
Okay, Chair. Roll call vote for Health Education and Human Service Committee regular meeting, October 12, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. Honorable Daniel Esso.
I'm here.
Honorable Daniel Esso answered roll call. Honorable Carl R. Slater.
Here.
Honorable Carl R. Slater answered roll call. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Oh, get Paul Begay's present.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Uh, Delegate Halona's present. Good morning.
Honorable Pernell Halona answered roll call. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
I'm here.
Honorable Edison J. Winika answered roll call. Honorable Charlene So is excused. Karen, you have five members present.
Thank you, committee members. And, and good morning to all the folks on the call. Uh, got eh, you just need to listen, get those sitting there. It is, and uh, we'll go on to the invocation. With that, could I have Honorable Paul Begay provide the invocation for this morning's proceeding?
Uh, Honorable Chair, uh, may I respectfully ask, uh, yes, as a colleague, I'm standing right in the middle of, uh, people, uh, in line at the market. Thank you.
Okay, H'goshela, Honorable, um, Edison Winika. Please provide the invocation for today's meeting.
H'goshi. Our heavenly Father, we come before thee this morning. We're so thankful for all the many blessings that thou bestows upon each and every one out, every one of us. We're so thankful for the good night's rest that we had, and for this beautiful new day, another opportunity to take care of the things we need to. We're so thankful for all that we're blessed with, for our families, for our loved ones, and for our elders, for their wisdom and for their guidance. And we're so thankful, Father, for our little ones, our children. Bless them that they might always be cared for and that they might continue to pursue their education, that we might always be able to provide for them. We're so thankful for the leadership within the nation, our president, vice president, the Navajo Nation Council, and all the local leaders, captain officials, school boards. And we're so thankful for the programs that we have, the division directors and the program directors and, and all the employees of the Navajo Nation for all that they do. Father, we ask for guidance in all that we do. Bless those that are sick, those that are mourning, those that are suffering, Father, that they might be confident, that the healing hands might be with them. And we're so thankful for helping one another, for strengthening each other as we've been going through this pandemic. Bless us that we might continue to care for one another. We might be able to completely overcome it and be with us in all that we do. And we're so thankful for the moisture. All the people that have been praying, their prayers have been answered. And Father, be with us now as we discuss the item some of the agenda. That we might do so with thy Spirit. We might be able to make decisions that will benefit those that will be coming before us. And be with us throughout the rest of this day. We might always be mindful of thee. These things we humbly pray for, in thy Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you for the very thoughtful words that you put before, for guidance, for knowledge, for wisdom, for care and sympathy for our fellow Navajos. Thank you for the very thoughtful words that you put before, for guidance, for knowledge, for wisdom, for care and sympathy for our fellow Navajos. Uh, with that, committee members, do you have any, um, announcement? The only announcement I have is we got a N'abakia kit, committee meeting tomorrow. Main intent and purposes is to put an agenda together for the, um, full session. And of course, there are other legislations that would, that need to be adopted. Uh, with that, um, let's go to item number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Folks on the call, you have, um, a teleconference floor to introduce yourselves. Anybody else want to introduce themselves?
Good morning, Chair.
Committee members, this is Michelle with Department of Health. I'm on the call.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Health Committee. This is Boyah Hanochne Anderson with OLC on the call. Thank you.
Good morning, this is Ashley Young with the Department of Health, Executive Director. Good morning, this is Michelle. Oops, sorry. This is Michelle Brown Yazi with the Navajo Department of Justice's Water Rights Unit.
Good morning, everyone. Honorable Chair and Committee, this is Oliver Arviso, Division of General Services. Thank you.
Good morning, this is Marlinda with Division of Social Services. Thank you.
Good morning, this is Brenda Sose with Division of Social Services. Thank you.
Good morning, this is Michelle Begay, um, Attorney, Navajo Department of Justice. Good morning.
Good morning, Che Kialan is online. Thank you.
Who should she get her going into call? We know that RDC is also meeting. Thank you. Um, anybody else on the call? And, and thank you, uh, she get those sitting there. Um, I know that, uh, we have relatives on the call. And maybe as a proper protocol, committee members, we introduce ourselves. Uh, say, uh, Daniel So, this is the need to send the connection. And it's, it's a cheap, but it's cheap. Uh, the question that's a cheap door, not Barney, that's another. But, uh, eh, uh, the next. Honorable Carl Slater, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Shana. She, uh, yeah, I mean, it's something that was just change, and I just changed it. Something I just know, I think I'm a tank, I shot, she, Carl Russell Slater, that's a gene. My name's Carl Slater. I'm the Vice Chair, and I'm Kia Aniborn for the Jewish people.
Say, honorable Paul Begay. Oh, that's been, I don't think you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of this committee. Uh, she Paul Begay, you know, she, I don't, uh, pardon, I'm a big kid. I mean, it's what I'm telling you, oh, they should get to know about the team, though, she. There is a kitchen, the next, you know, because Tony was just saying, totally, she need to change it, okay, I'm just another that. Thank you. Uh, let's have a good day, a good meeting. Yeah. Honorable Edison Winika. Uh, do the, do the, uh, so silly. Try again.
Acha.
Oh, that's long.
H'goshi. Thank you, Chair. Uh, she Edison J. Winika. Uh, Tilton, the Oak Springs, so, 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 Saint Michael's, chapter's eh, yeah, I don't, uh, that I need to start, he not yet, so, I don't eh, uh, never let them stop. But, uh, you can understand, she needs to, because she, we represent the whole nation. Oh, eh, without eh, you know, she didn't do, and she need eh, she, she know, she probably, but she's cheap. Yeah, I need to change it, totally, she need to know. They Tilton, the, I, eh, has a towel.
Okay, H'goshela, Honorable Pernell Halona.
Well, yeah, that been, uh, no, so, uh, good afternoon to me, how to, remember, uh, more. Have a wonderful day. Uh, she, uh, Halona, yeah. I know. What she, she, actually, I was just changing, and he just said, she, try, I just know, it, I don't know. And they try to, the, I should be, I usually came, that's, Springs, the, twin legs. Uh, I, uh, baseball, I, I.
H'goshela, committee members, I do the folks on the call. Um, we appreciate your attendance. Uh, let's go to item number three, the review and the adoption of the agenda. Miss, and Angelita Benali, go ahead and introduce yourself and then read the document into the record.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. Uh, I'm Angelita Benali, uh, the doctor, initially, I don't, send up, if you're watching, she, to a lady, addition, I don't, to a, by, just a change. And I'm originally from Kyoto Canyon, my take, which are, Jenin. And, uh, I've been working with the Office of Legislative Services for twenty-two years now. So, I, I appreciate, um, the work that I do with the standing committees. Good morning, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, I'll read the, uh, proposed agenda into record. You have your proposed agenda for the Health Education and Human Services Committee, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council regular meeting, October twenty, uh, I'm sorry, October twelve, twenty twenty-two, ten a.m., presiding the Honorable Daniel Esso, Chairperson, the Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chairperson. Places via telecommunications when you rock Navajo Nation, Arizona. One call meeting to order, roll call invocation announcements. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. You have, uh, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Number five is receiving reports. A is, um, regarding, are from the Navajo Department of Health, as well as the Chinley Unified School District. And it's regarding the Chinley Community Center access to the Chinley Unified School District. Presenters are Quincy Nate, Superintendent, Chinley Unified School District, Chinley, Navajo Nation, Arizona. Uh, Michelle Brown Yazi, Assistant Attorney General, Water Rights Unit in Navajo DOJ. Uh, Mike Colonna, Department Manager, Three, Navajo Land Department. Dr. Jill Jim, Director of the Navajo, uh, Department of Health. Uh, Oliver Arviso, Executive Director with the Division of General Services. Six, old business, none, seven, new business. A is legislation number zero one six eight dash twenty-two. B is legislation number zero one eight four dash twenty-two. And eight, close of meeting announcements, adjournment. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Benali. Um, committee members, what's the wishes of the committee?
Motion, Halona.
Motion by Honorable Pernell. Who was that? Is there a second? Committee members, do I hear a second? Second? Second by, was that the use of change, Honorable Paul Begay?
No. Later.
Oh, Slater, H'goshela, thank you for the second. Committee members, any additions or deletions from this agenda? If there are none, then, uh, Ms. Karen Chi, um, introduce yourself and then, uh, go to the roll call vote. I'm sorry, I didn't, um, allow you to introduce yourself at the time.
Yes, eh, uh, can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, eh, she Karen Tunes, yeah. It's long, my, excuse me, but she's cheap. I don't have by the city, twenty, eh, that's another. Chair, roll call vote for review and adopt the agenda. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote? Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
I'll vote green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Chair, you have four in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Chi. Okay. With that, committee members, let's go on to item number four, review and adopting the journals. Ms. Angelita Benali?
It's Mr. Chair and members of the, um, Health Education and Human Services Committee. Number four is review and adopt the journals. You have four journals, one for September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, and September thirtieth, twenty-two. And I believe Ms. Chi did send out through via email, uh, to the Health Education and Human Services Committee members copies of all of these, uh, corrected journals. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Benali. The Chair did receive the emails on those journals, committee members. How do you wish to address this particular agenda item?
Motion, Delegate Paul Begay.
Well, the Chair recognizes the motion by Honorable Paul Begay to adopt the, um, journals for, that was reviewed by Ms. Benali. Second by Honorable, uh, Edison Winika. Uh, here, committee members. Any questions, uh, or comments, or regarding this before we go to a vote? It is a Ms. uh, Karen Chi, thank you for getting, uh, those journals to us for our review. Um, I received, I reviewed mine yesterday. Um, and thank you. With that, uh, Ms. Chi, let's take it to a vote.
Chair, vote, a roll call vote for accepting the journal. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Halona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Chair, you have four in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Chi. Um, and thank you, committee members, for the vote. Let's go on to item number five, receiving report. A, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, please review with the committee, uh, this agenda item.
Mr. Chair? Oh, Mr. Chair, uh, this is Angelita Benali. I, uh, I was following up on the next report. Um, you, the next, um, item is number five, receiving reports, and it's from A, or, uh, A from Navajo Department of Health and the Chinley Unified School District. It's regarding the Chinley Community Center access to the, uh, Chinley Unified School District. Presenters are Superintendent Quincy Nate of the Chinley Unified School District, Chinley, Navajo Nation, Arizona, uh, Michelle Brown Yazi, Assistant Attorney General, Water Rights Unit in Navajo DOJ. Mike Colonna, Department Manager, Three, Navajo Land Department. Dr. Jill Jim, Director, Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. Oliver Arviso, Executive Director for the Division of General Services. And, uh, I got off the, um, uh, phone with the Chinley Unified School District Superintendent's office, and unfortunately, um, Superintendent Nate is gonna be, is out at the office for this week and next week. However, uh, they are having, uh, Pristine Jones, who's the Business Manager for Chinley Unified School District to represent the school there in, in this report. Uh, she's familiar with the issues. And also available on the call will be, uh, Wayne Claw, and I believe that, uh, he's with the Governing Board. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, this is, um, this is Michelle Brown off, Yazi. May I ask a question, sir?
Oh, uh, certainly. Yeah, Jason, another. Thank you for being on the call.
Oh, yeah.
And before you, before, before you ask that question, uh, Fattila, Honorable Vice Chair Carl Slater, I know that you're the one that wanted, uh, this, uh, report. Um, perhaps you could give us some, uh, foundation information, background information, and then that would also take care of, uh, what we're basically looking at in this report.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I won't pretend to be an expert on the full gamut of issues, but I was contacted by Mr. Nate regarding the return of the facility for Chinley Community Use and, I think, administration by the school district. And that was the purpose of requesting this report. It seemed that there were some obstacles, um, but the sports programs were desiring to use the facility and currently don't have, or should say, not all the programs have the appropriate space to, deliver their, their sports programming for, uh, the school districts. So, I asked for the report, and I hope that we can come to some sort of resolution today on a timeframe for transferring it back over and making sure we make positive use of the space in the community. So, thank you, Chair.
H'goshela, Fattila, thank you. I do, uh, another, uh, Ms. Brown Yazi. You have teleconference floor for your question.
Um, it's probably more of a clarification. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Um, I am the AAG for the Water Rights Unit, and I know that my name got brought up in this matter that's about to be discussed. However, I'm not involved, and, um, uh, sometimes, uh, Michelle Begay Nakai and I get, um, people confuse us because of our first name and that we're both, um, uh, we're not quite sure why we always get confused. But I don't, um, have any involvement in this matter. It's not my, um, it, the Water Rights Unit has, does not, um, uh, oversee, you know, who, the determination of ownership of buildings. Uh, we pursue water rights on behalf of the nation, and I don't think that this is a water rights matter. Um, I did just learn about my being on the agenda just prior to the meeting, and so I did, uh, send out some emails, and, um, I was told that the, um, the matter might, uh, be overseen, i- it, the attorney's role in the matter, uh, maybe Mr. Robert Allen from DNR or, um, na- the Natural Resources Unit at DOJ. So, I apologize for not being, um, involved in the matter to help with this issue today, um, but I would like to be excused because I am supposed to be on another call pertaining to water rights. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Sinala, and yes, uh, this definitely is not a water rights issue. It is, uh, I think, uh, Michelle, um, gosh, the other hyphenated name, Nakai, uh, is the one that should be on the call as well as, uh, it's regarding, uh, facilities. And so that's, uh, the reason that, um, General Services, uh, Department of Health, and the Chin- Chinley Unified School District are on the call. Um, yes, you are excused. And thank you for being
Thank you, Sally.
Oh, thank you for being, um, attentive to, um, the protocols. Appreciate that. So, let's go on to, um, let's go on to the presentation. Um, uh, Fattila, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, give us some guidance on who should basically present first. Okay. Let me proceed as best as I can wade through the issues, uh.
Chair, so, this is Angelita Benali.
Hello, who is that on the call?
Angelita Benali.
Yes, uh, Ms. Benali.
Um, Chair, so, and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Uh, a while ago, I did see, um, Superintendent Natae's name on the call list. However, I don't see his, um, name, i- he might, his call must, might have dropped, but I do have, um, Pris- Scene Yaws, uh, Priscine Jones, I'm sorry, Priscine Jones. She's the Business Manager for the Chinley Unified School District on the call. Good morning.
Ms. Jones, you have the teleconference floor.
I guess I just got the agenda five minutes ago, and I'm on, on the line.
Yes, present the issue that you bring to the committee.
I can do that. Um, I'm, I'm not really familiar with, um, the process, but I can just give you a history of, um, what has happened with our Triple C. So, in March of two thousand, we had, um, executive order because of COVID, and we gave our Triple C to the Navajo Nation so they could run their, the COVID facility out of there. And, um, we, they ran that, they ran their crisis center out of there for about two years. And we didn't receive any payment for almost two fiscal years. And it wasn't until a year ago, we started getting payment on the facility. And as they're exiting out, Navajo Nation is exiting out of the facility, um, they had promised to make repairs to what they modified in Triple C. And I spent a lot of time with Eric Gale, who they sent to us doing a walkthrough, and I actually put a RFP together with him with pictures and everything on what they need to put back as existing repairs. Um, and just recently, we found out that the Navajo Nation doesn't want to make those repairs because we were told that the Triple C is on their inventory. So, I know Mr. Natae had, um, provided documentation, and I'm looking for it right now. He provided the documentation to Eric Gale, um, on, um, ownership. So, the ownership was given to, to the Chinley Unified, um, no, to the Chinley Chapter, and they weren't able to maintain that facility. Um, they weren't able to, to keep up on the maintenance of it. So, the ownership was transferred to Chinley Unified School District, and from there, Chinley went and made the upgrades on Triple C and even paved around the facility. Um, and we incorporated that facility into our preventive maintenance buildings, and we actually added Triple C into our school facility board buildings. So, as of that time, we, we've had ownership, and we've been taking care of the Triple C, and now Navajo Nation is saying that that building is not ours. So, um, we were requesting that Navajo Nation, um, advised by the contract that we have with them and, and continue to make repairs like they said they would in the contract. I haven't gone in extended lease agreement. They said they would extend our lease. So, as this current time, I haven't gone an extension. I keep asking about it. Um, I haven't gotten any kind of feedback. So, um, so that's, that's the issue that we have here at Chinley Unified School District.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, uh, do we have Superintendent Quincy Natae on the call?
Chinanda, uh, this is Quincy Natae. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Natae, um, uh, Health and Education Services Committee, thank you for, uh, allowing us to, um, express our concerns. Uh, first and foremost, it's, um, we just need our facility back so we can use it for our purposes for our students. Um, and what was disturbing to me is now we're being told that Navajo Nation owns it, and that's the holdup on the RFP. Um, I was also told the Water Rights Attorney was making that determination, and not sure where that stands now. Um, but bottom line is, uh, when the facility was turned into an alternative care site, it, um, was gutted. A lot of the cooling system was completely gutted, uh, was revamped, there was piping installed for oxygen, uh, there was a lot of modifications done. And we've been waiting for that facility to be reverted back. Um, and now we're in this dilemma of ownership, and so it's a little frustrating that my kids can't use it, and it's been well over two and a half years. Uh, that's all I have right now, uh, and I may be dropping the call, so I just wanted to give that quick update. Okay?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Natae. That helps us in, um, getting this, uh, clearer picture. And, and, and again, um, I think, uh, what we're, what Ms., uh, Michelle Brown Yazi brought to our attention is, uh, there might be, um, confusion or, uh, just the fact that, uh, attorneys, um, that are referred to, not the right one. It would be, um, Ms. Angelita Benali, who, the other Michelle DOJ attorney, could you, uh?
Um, Sinala, this is Dr. Jim. I'm wondering if you could allow me time. I, I do want to speak to some of this because it is under the agreement as with the Health Command Operations Center and Department of Health. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Angelita Benali.
Go ahead, Ms. Benali.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, Ms. Michelle Begay Nakai is on the line.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's who everybody's referring to because is, uh, the attorney that's covering the human services issues, as I recall. Ms., uh, Begay Nakai, did you address the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I am an attorney assigned to the Navajo Department of Health and also the nation's, um, six thirty-eight contracts that it has with VIA and IHS. In this matter, I was assisting Navajo Department of Health, and, um, there was an agreement that Ms. Jones referred to. Initially, I believe it was an agreement that the nation would use that facility. Um, at the beginning of the pandemic, but then, within a few months later, the school district actually asked for payment from the nation to be, use the facility. So, we had to work that back out with Dr. Jim and everybody else, and we worked out a contract, and then due to everything that was happening during that time, you know, the gar- the government was partially shut down, um, the council had appropriated different types of funding to different, um, departments and divisions, and there was a deadline of, I think, October or November, and the way that things were going, some of those timelines were not met, and I believe that was the, one of the things was the, uh, disagreement with, uh, CU SD. Um, so, there is a lot of things happening. If it, um, that contract ended up not getting, what do you call it? Not getting completely processed, so, IDOH did have to work on it again later. And then through this process, they continued to use it as an alternate care site, and it was, um, there were a lot, a lot of changes made to the facility, which I believe IDOH had to pay for. And then, and then later, um, it came up, I guess, I think it was this year. Dr. Jim can provide more details regarding when she found out that, um, she did receive documentation saying that the Chinley Community Center, which was part of the, 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 I guess, the lease agreement between the nation and the school district as part of what they were using. I know that one facility was used as the actual care site, and then one side, I think, the, the Wildcat Den was used as, um, storage. So, it, it came to Dr. Jim's attention that this, the community center might actually be a Navajo Nation-owned building, and she had concerns that we're being asked to pay to use the facility along with other, um, things like security and, and utility and storage and like that. So, she asked me to look into it, and since, um, I guess, facilities and land issues are not under our unit, which is the Human Services and Government Unit, I did reach out to the Natural Resources Unit, and I spoke to Veronica Black Hat, Black Hat, who's the AAG for that unit about this. And she, she told me that she would talk to the land department to see if they could find anything regarding this matter. And because of Dr. Jim's concerns, um, we've been trying to look into this. Unfortunately, we haven't really been able to get any answers from our land department on this. Um, so I think that's where we're kind of stuck. Um, I know that Dr. Jim has noted she, she can provide more specifics regarding her concerns on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Michelle Begay Nakai. Got that in my brain now. Thank you. Um, Dr. Jill Jim, you have the teleconference floor.
Um, yes, Chair, so, I think, um, I would like to request to go into executive session if that would be more, I think would be more appropriate to, um, share more information. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Could you get with, uh, Legislative Services to get us another call-in number?
Okay, I'm, I'll, I'll work on it right now.
Okay, committee members, I guess so. And, and Ms. Jones and, uh, Mr. Nakai. So, uh, the community center as well as the Wildcat Den, is this what the issue, uh, really is, uh, about?
Right now, currently, the issue is about the community center. So, the information on ownership was provided, um, by Mr. Natae on May third, twenty twenty-two, so I have the legal document here. Um, it was shared with Dr. Jim, so, um, the ownership and the, how the transfer had happened. Um, but right now, like Mr. Natae had, um, emphasized, we just wanna be able to use the Triple C because we have our basketball practices happening, and we don't have enough space, and we really need to, um, get that back in operation so we can use our facilities.
Okay, uh, if you could email that document that you're referring to, um, respective of the community center ownership. More than likely, it was built with Navajo Nation dollars and at the behest of the Chinley Chapter. So, um, not actually the, at the behest, but with all the lobby and advocacy efforts of the chapter. Um, that would help us, um, help the committee as far as what we're um, we're, uh, hearing, and it may end up just, um, I, I view that, uh, uh, the Chinley, um, school district is bringing the issue through our Vice Chair Slater, and we really want to, um, basically, uh, rely on him to also provide some direction. Uh, committee members, uh, as far as the executive session, um, I think the phone lines have been set up, so it, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, it would be the five members of the committee, uh, the two, uh, best staff members, uh, that help us on the call, as well as Dr. Jim and Ms., uh, Michelle Begay Nakai. Dr. Jim, who else would you allow or want to be on, uh, this call?
And that would be it, sir.
Agusila.
Mr. Chair, this is Priscine Jones. Can you tell me where I need to email those documents? I like to share all the contracts that have been, um, executed by Navajo Nation. The first contract was called, um, that was signed by Mr. President Nez, That was signed by Mister President Nez, was referred to as um Care Campus. And then there was another contract that was issued. There was three contracts that I had to work with Navajo Nation on through this. This whole process. So I like to provide all those documentation to you guys too.
Yes, uh and and thank you for for uh. Uh, bringing that to our attention. We appreciate that, Miss Jones and. Uh, you have uh Miss Angelita Benali's uh email address and. Send it to her and then she'll uh share it with the committee.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh Honorable Vice Chair Slater.
Thank you. Um. I guess I would like to hear the rationale for going into executive session because um uh there hasn't been one provided and it's. Peculiar for me that we would just do it without having a discussion on why it needs to be an executive session.
Agusila, Honorable Vice Chair Slater. Uh, Dr. Jill Jim and perhaps uh Miss Michelle Begay Nakai.
Um, yes, Sina, this is Dr. Jim. Thank you, uh Mister Slater for that question. Um. I am really, well, we do have Miss um Miss Begay Nak- um. Nakai Begay helping with this um on the matters of the contracts and. Because there's discrepancies, I don't really think that is is it is public information. Um. That because it seems like um what I'm hearing is I don't want to. Um, I guess it needs to just be brought up with the between the school district and ourselves to clarify this more thoroughly. Um, I I don't believe all of the information that's being shared is correct and I just want to make sure that. We're in a safe place to have those conversations of this if we're bringing. Um, Miss um Begay Nakai into this to help clarify the contract. I I think it's more appropriate to have that conversation in an executive session. Um, as well. So that is the rationale. Um, but I can certainly. Um, I do have concerns about um the topic itself, but I'm not going, I'm not willing to disclose that in public. If you want me to do a written response, I can do that. Uh, but otherwise I won't. Speak to them other other than the only thing I can say publicly is we are working on this. Um, with um DOJ and there is also transition with Division of Natural Resources with resources. They do have a new director. I have not reached out to her as well to get clarification. I did speak to Mister Nauti last week already as well. Um, our executive branch is aware of his concern, um but as far as repairing and getting the facility. Back up to date, um that will take a request for um proposal for someone to do that and we did have a conversation after. Um, he also had sent an email to President Nez as well. So I am being asked to address this and I did have a conference conversation with with Mister Nauti already. So I just feel like I'm repeating myself um with what needs to happen next. But now we're bringing in other items like previous contracts and other things. Um, and it just feels like it's more appropriate to have that conversation not in public regarding the matters. That we we need to address with the contract and what needs to be done. So that's my rationale. Delegate Slater and Sina.
Chair.
Honorable Vice Chair, follow up.
Thank you. Um. I guess based on hearing that, I I I'm still not hearing any reason, like is there a sensitive personnel issue? Is there a part of the contracts that have been signed that? Are for some reason supposed to remain secret and not subject to the public? I don't think the. School, the chapter and the Department of Health are entangled in any. Legal wrangling right now, so. I mean, is there a legal position that needs to be protected? I I. I I would like to get something stated on the record. I mean, that's the whole point of being an oversight committee and asking these questions and it it doesn't. Taste right to go behind closed doors. Um. It just seems like we could answer what we can answer now and if things. Be deferred to another time, then they can be deferred to another time. That would be at the discretion of Department of Health. And if there are. Positions that they don't want to publicly make, then they don't have to make them. That's their discretion, but. Can we hear from um the DOJ Attorney on what her analysis is and why we need to move into executive session, Chair?
And then I would also um. But the the matter before our Legislative Council. Um, Miss Henderson. Uh, uh, Miss uh Michelle Begay Nakai. Regarding um. Honorable Sladers to question.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, right now, I. I think the only. In terms of like, I guess, a legal position, if that's what you would want to discuss regarding. How the nation may. Want to respond to CUSD on this matter. That could be discussed in um executive session. Right now, I thought it was just an overview of what the issue was. And that was the the information I provided um. Earlier. Um, I I probably would need to talk to Dr. Jim a little bit more because I haven't recently talked to her um on this matter. Just um her inquiring it on if there was anything updated. Um, so I'm not sure. What she's, I guess, what she feels is sensitive info right now. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Miss uh Begay Nakai. Miss uh Henderson, Miss Lawyer Henderson. I know you're, we're all kind of like on the periphery of the discussion. And some of the documents that are referred to, we haven't really seen. And Miss Benali, once you get the documents from. In light Chinley Unified School District, uh Miss uh Jones, could you also share them with uh Miss Henderson?
I only have um Angelita Benali's email address. So if she could just forward that, I would appreciate that.
Yes, yes, that would, that's how we will work in in this uh regard. Um. Honorable Slater. More guidance.
Thank you, Chair. Um, a- again, I I just not hearing a reason to go behind closed doors and. I don't think there's any reason we can't help establish the facts as each side understands them and. Um, Miss Jones has provided an explanation, I believe, on behalf of the school district on what they believe the situation to be. And I would like to understand what the Department of Health understands the situation to be. If they need to request the presence of the land department at that time, then I would sincerely appreciate that. I believe Miss Benali put. Mister Holona and the land department on the agenda and. I hope that they'd be able to oblige the request that they could clarify who they believe is the owner of the building. I thought it was a school building that had then been transferred to the chapter and then was coming back to the school district and not something that was constructed with. Navajo Nation funds, but I'm I may be wrong with that since it certainly precedes my time on this planet. Um. And I I I guess, you know, if somebody wants to motion to go into executive session, I'll say no, but I'll vote against it. But I I would like to hear a fuller presentation from the Department of Health. And then if they think that there are things that they can't share on the record, then they can say that. That that'll be fine for now. But I I really would like to understand, you know. What their plan is to turn the facility over and to. And how they are working with the school districts to accommodate, I shouldn't say accommodate, but comply with the requests that. The school district has made in order to have that facility be usable for the students and for the community. So. Those renovations or rehabilitations to the facility, I I would think are necessary and the department would feel an obligation to complete. And if there's something. There that oversight needs to be aware of, then this would be a good time to share it because perhaps we could help with it. Um, so. That's my position, Chair, and. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable uh Vice Chair. Guess so. One, what I'm seeing is. The executive order. And then we have. An entity, the Health Command Center. Taking over operations. And there is on the Navajo Nation side acknowledgement. That the. Community Center is controlled by. Chinley School District. And there is. A lease that's e- executed by the president. That's why I'm waiting through um this new information. And. Since uh I don't know if the Health Command Center has exited. Operations at the Community Center. And if they aren't using it, then. The. As I see it, that the school district is wanting to. Get back the full use of that facility for an educational program. Uh, Dr. Jill Jim. As the Health Command. Um, operations um exited the Community Center.
Um, Sina, thank you for that question. Um. And we have not exited, we have moved almost all, we have moved all the PPEs and everything. The only thing that's meaning that remains in there is we didn't really gut the whole place out on what to reclarify that. There are things in there, like we covered the the basketball gym floors, we had um, we did do renovations during the time. P A, P A did do rewiring of stuff and improvements during the time that um. We were there as well and we did pay uh both Wildcat Den. I'm not sure um to what extent. Uh, why Wildcat Den is not open right now, but. I know that there is an urgency and we are working on it. So we are, there is no um supplies in there. It has been empty for some time now. The only thing we have there is the outside clinics. There's like four or five clinics that we need to re, we need to relocate. And so I'm waiting to do an RFP um that was still fully executed. I'm working with Chief of Staff. And as I mentioned, that we're gonna meet with the new director for DNR to. Clarify this so that I know what to put on and notify the landowner that we are. I'm going to do renovation and there was an Navajo Nation property number on there that. Um, the attorney did indicate, so. It is ready and we we just need to close out some conversations and clarifications. Um. And hopefully we can get the the building up and going again very soon, but even with our process to do an RFP. That takes a while too. So I think I just wanna. Let you know that we are using Indian Health Service um ARPA dollars that we received to do. Everything back to where um it should be. And so whatever that is, um there is funding available for it. We just need time to clarify this and also. Uh, push out an RFP and find a vendor to do that. I think there has been some standstill in communication for some time regarding this, so. Uh, I do appreciate um the school district for continuing to work with us. We don't, um, there is. So the reason why the school district is involved is pre-pandemic. The Public Health Emergency Program had already had an agreement with them that there's a an emergency that does occur. That that would be one of the warehouses that would be uh receiving, if we are receiving supplies and. And whatnot um to respond to the emergency. So what there is, it is vacant. We don't have individuals there. It has been for quite some time. Um, as we've been trying to address the RFP issue, so. Um, if that, I don't think there's any secret conversation. I just think that we need it to be um sort of um. A share of more of an informal conversation and dialogue. Um, that was the reason for the executive session request. If it's not needed at this point, I guess these are my only comments is that we are working on it and we have, I have been in communication with Mister Nauti. I don't think the previous contracts really say much. We're just trying to get. Um, the building back up to par and then. And try to get it um usable again and that really requires. Us to um post the RFP for that. So if those that are listening, I know we'll be looking for vendors and contractors to. Um, fix the place up and so that's our intention. And so. Unfortunately, just because there's an urgency to access to them, this is where we're at. Um. But we are still in a public health emergency so far. Um, there is no lifting of the declaration at this point. Um, and everything still stands as far as responding to COVID. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Dr. Jim. Committee members, any questions, any thoughts going forward?
Chair.
Honorable um Vice Chair Slater, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I think at this time I would just ask that Miss Jones, Mister Nauti, Dr. Jim, the land department, all get together. And meet again and report back to the committee. I think it'd be helpful if the school district sends an email or a letter to. The chairman and myself and then the same thing from the Department of Health and the land department on. What they believe the next steps are and how they're gonna move forward. Um, I think there's just a little more research that needs to go into. All of this right now and it'd be helpful to have an official position on the ownership of the building. What needs to be adhered to under the contract before it's turned back over. And. Have that full understanding today through further conversation. So that's my ask and I hope uh the committee would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Honorable Vice Chair Slater. Yes, uh. Again, committee members and folks on the call, what I see is um. The issue, uh Chinley Unified School District is. Using its uh availability uh to go through the. The Legislative Oversight Committee and has not. Um. Brought a lawyer to the issue. However, on the Navajo Nation side, right off the bat, we're, we've got lawyers. And I really feel like uh I agree with the Vice Chair Slater. Let's uh have the folks uh. Pursue. pursue administrative remedies. And it just appears that, uh, there are documents that are signed by the President of the Navajo Nation. And just the fact that there's a contract in place. Um, it's unfortunate that it's going this far. But, uh, let's give, uh, the parties that are, um, involved in, in this matter, another chance to work out the issues and bring remedy to the situation.
I'll motion to accept the report, sure.
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, committee members, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Hakeh Hala, um, we have a second by Honorable Paul Begay. With that acceptance of the report, the committee asked the parties to, um, pursue administrative remedies and to report back to the committee at the next regular scheduled, uh, meeting. That would be October
Twenty eight.
Twenty sixth, I think it is.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it is October twenty sixth.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. And then, uh, to all the parties, uh, Quincy Nate, Ms. Jones, Ms. Hald, Begay Nakai, Dr. Jill Jim, thank you for being on the call. Let's see what we can do, uh, regarding, um, this matter. With that, Ms. uh, Karen Chi, please provide the roll call vote.
Chair, roll call vote for accepting the report from Navajo Department of Health, Tinley Unified School District. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Delegate Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Honorable Paul, oh, excuse me, Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Chair, you have three in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Chief. Um, now let's go on to the next agenda item. Um, Ms. Angelita Benali.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. You have your, uh, six old business nun, and the next one is seven new business. A is legislation number zero one six eight dash twenty two. And it's regarding an action relating to Health Education and Human Services Committee approving amendments to the Navajo Nation Division of Social Services Professional Standards and Ethics Manual, removing the Financial Service Protocol section and include the, uh, Burial Assistance and General Assistance Policy Manual. The sponsor is, uh, Council Delegate Edison Winika. And this legislation has been previously read into record and it was also, um, reviewed into record the last meeting and it was deferred to this meeting for, for possible action. Also, um, the Health Education and Human Services, uh, Committee is the final authority, uh, for this legislation. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Regarding the matters, Ms. Benali, uh, we have to recall it to the table.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, last Friday, um, before the, um, there, there was a motion or a second, um, the sponsor delegate, Winika, did, um, request for this legislation to be deferred.
Ms. Benali, you went on mute. We didn't hear your advice.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, the, um, I'm sorry, I went on mute. I'm trying to clarify this.
On, um, September thirtieth, the legislation number, uh, zero one six eight dash twenty two was on the Health Education and Human Services Agenda. However, uh, before, um, it was read and reviewed, um, with the committee. However, a motion and a second was not taken. Um, the, uh, sponsor, Council Delegate Edison Winika, did request that this legislation be deferred to the next meeting, which is today. And, but however, there was a motion and a second to defer this legislation to today's agenda. And a vote was taken four zero. Uh, the motion was held by, uh, Vic, Vice Chair Carl Slater and second by Council Delegate Pernell Halona. And the vote was four zero to defer this legislation to today's agenda. And that was at the sponsor's request. And, but there was no main motion and no second taken at that time. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, um, Ms. Benali. Committee members, we have legislation before us, it's been written to the record. How does the committee want to address this?
It's barely, trying to give a report to my chapter yesterday.
Oh, I got just getting cut off, yeah. Yeah, I got cut off when I went down there.
Honorable Halona, we're hearing conversation of what you did yesterday. The proceeding over here at Hess is, uh, we have legislation zero one, uh, legislation, uh, before us. The Chair is asking for a motion to put it, uh, for adoption and a second.
Chair, can I, excuse me, can I ask a question?
Uh, yes, Honorable Slater, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, one of the reasons, or I thought the primary reason that we did not consider this legislation last time is that there was the potential for amendments or changing the legislation. And I guess before we motion and second to go into it, um, could we ask the sponsor if he desires for it to be presented today? Um, and if so, then we can move forward. Thank you. I just don't know if that was all resolved.
Uh, thank you, Honorable, um, Vice Chair Slater. Honorable Edison Winika, are we prepared to proceed?
Thank you, uh, Chair. Um, I don't know if my agents are on Dana Neswick, Gishi, and, uh, Rayanne Matiba, are you on the line?
Uh, good morning, this is Marlinda Littleman. I'm with Division of Social Services and I will be, um, presenting on behalf of Director Neswick Gishi. And on the line, we also have Rayanne Matiba, Program Manager for Navajo Family Assistant Services. Yes, we are here. Thank you.
Chair, uh, I don't have any problem going, uh, before the committee, but the only thing is, uh, one of the things I'm always concerned about is, uh, amendments to, uh, Plan of Operations, uh, towards the end of this administration. Uh, because, uh, it's an extensive, uh, amendments to this. Well, I should hit our bond so case as, uh, committee members. Chair.
Oh, Hakeh Hala, uh, Honorable, uh, Edison Winika, committee members, what are your thoughts? Uh, sponsor is, uh, deferring to the committee on, um, regarding this, uh, um, particular legislation.
Chair, I'll motion, I'd like to hear the presentation on why this is needed and we can go from there. Thank you.
Okay, Honorable, uh, Vice Chair Slater, that's a motion to adopt the, uh, legislation.
This is Delegate Begay. I will motion. I also like to see the content of it or hear from the sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize, uh, Honorable, uh, Paul Begay, second to the motion. With that, uh, um, Honorable Edison Winika, you have the floor.
Uh, she, uh, Hakeh Hala, uh, Chair, uh, I need to, uh, put it on our, so I think there will probably be some amendments, I think I say totally so. But as far as, uh, that goes, uh, my, my, uh, interest in this one is, uh, uh, that, uh, protocol section, you get the burial assistance, general assistance, uh, policy manual, like it. Do it, uh, studies in the lead, uh, quite good. So I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, refer to the, um, uh, agents, uh, Marlinda Littleman, she, I don't, that, uh, uh, Rayanne, uh, Matiba. Linda?
Okay, uh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, it's a, uh, she, yeah, Marlinda Littleman, yeah. Auto Division of Social Services, eh, yeah, banos, nish, nishlani gi eh ya, may dish gis, nishlani do, tuzillana bashis ching, te dish gis, nashachi, ado, nakri, dene eh eh, dashanala. Um, Director Neswick Gishi, um, she is on, um, she's attending in person the triennial, um, Administration for Children and Families Tribal Advisory Committee meeting. Oko ajay eh ya, bina nishhala. Oko she eh ya, kua, um, shetol ad. Oko ado, Hakeh Hala, um, Delegate Edison Winika, the, um, legislation gi, um, um, the sponsor in la. Uh, she, it's a so brief and general interview, um, overview, she eh ya, eh dish late over this legislation. Zero one six eight two two. Ado, um, Rayanne Matita, Matiba, she is on the line, eh eh, Program Manager for the Navajo Family Assistant Services. She, um, she'll go more into the, um, specifics. So, um, there are two policies. Um, the, the, the policy, the burial assistance policy and the general assistance policy. Eh eh ya, it was part of this financial services protocol. Oko, um, AD gi, um, we're, uh, eliminating or striking that out and we're, um, inserting the burial assistance and general assistance. Um, Joe, eh si, beninaki eh ya, di, um, da nishiki, di Navajo Family Assistant Services, ikid, um, in the past, um, administration, um, um, that, uh, I'd say Department of Family Services, ajy, yajin, da nishne, auto Department of Self-Reliance, ado, ajit, eh ya, eh ya, anana, kri. Oko, di, the different departments score, joko, um, not, nelo, kudi, policy, ki, oyoh, oyoh, de kushin versions, and then, oko, di kudipeta, nishen, oyoh, nih, asalvi, oko, eh benina, di hajo, baan do, nih, um, hajo, policy, ki, um, bashte, do, nih, oko. Um, that way it'll be consistent and they are workers, ki, they'll use the policy in a uniform matter. Ado di policy, ki, oyodo, um, di, um, the, the twenty-four CFR twenty, ki, or, uh, they were deviating from that, oko, eh di, ki, hajo, be kaha, um, in do, nih, no, eh, hota, eh revise, eh delia. Oko, de kushin, um, meetings eh ya, di work sessions, ki, eh, that's, eh, ni, oko, eh, di, Navajo Family Assistant Services, yan, da nishid, do, akua, executive, yan, da nishiki, eh eh di, um, um, hajo, na, na, li, koe, eh, hota, eh, um, um, amendment, sa delia. Oko, ah she, ah she, um, ah, ts, so, oh, oh, pa, eh, chah, na, adole. Um, oko, she eh ya, um, Rayanne, ba, de dish, ah, ajat, do, she, to, ye, nishna, hatodne. Um, of course, she, di council, chairso, and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Um, we respectfully request your review and consideration. Um, adoshi, ah, bohne, anegita, eh, koto, na, de, ki, deki, eh, koto, um, we will respond, only. Oko, Hakeh, um, let me, if I may, um, I'll turn my time over to, um, Rayanne Matiba. Thank you.
Ms. Matiba, you have the floor.
Um, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Uh, my name is Rayanne Matiba. I am the Navajo Family Assistant Services, um, Senior Program and Project Specialist. Um, also, um, I guess AKA the Program Manager for this program. Um, I've been with this program since, um, September of two thousand twenty-one. And within the past year, we have, um, noticed a lot of the policies, um, which are outdated and don't really reflect, um, the services that we should be providing to our, our applicants for burial assistance and general assistance. So I'll briefly go over, um, the purpose of why we are trying to get this, um, initiated. So legislation, um, zero one six eight dash twenty-two will remove the Financial Services Protocol that was approved in March eighteenth, two thousand eight, which is about fourteen years ago. And the intent is to replace it with the Burial Assistance and General Assistance Policy Manual. On March eighteenth, two thousand eight, um, the hu, Health and Human Services, Social Services Committee hu- Health and Human Service, Social Services Committee of the Twenty-First Navajo Nation Council passed Resolution HSSCMA dash zero one dash zero eight that approved the Navajo Nation Division of Social Services Professional Standards and Ethics, including the Financial Services Protocol. The Financial Services Protocol contains the Burial Assistance, General Assistance, Tribal Work Experience Program, Emergency Assistance, Community Service Block Grant, and Low-Income Home Energy and Assistance Program. Um, and this is what we are revising. The Navajo Division of Social Services does not operate the Tribal Work Experience Program. The emergency assistance through is through the BIA um is an unfunded mandate. And we do have a LIHEAP uh policy manual in existence. In nineteen eighty-two, the Navajo Nation contracted with the BIA pursuant to Public Law ninety-three dash six thirty-eight to administer the social services program, including uh burial assistance and general assistance. The Navajo Family Assistant Services operates um several services, including burial assistance and general assistance, which are funded by BIA through Public Law ninety-three six thirty-eight contracts. We also operate LIHEAP, um, CSPG, and a new one that came on board uh more recently, the LIWAP, which is a Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program. And those are funded through the um Administration for Children and Services Office of Community Services. Um, we also offer the Navajo School Clothing Program, which is funded by the Navajo Nation. An internal work group held a series of Zoom meetings updating the um burial assistance and general assistance provisions. Um, this included the um INFAS senior K workers, caseworkers, sorry, at the field levels. Uh, myself, the INFAS manager, the um Office of Executive Director, TAS Administrator, the Office of Executive Director um Policy Section, and the um Navajo Division of Social Services Deputy Division Director. And with that, I'd like to give a special thanks to the INFAS senior caseworkers who were committed in providing their input um as well as direct services to their clients. And um they diligently took time to help us um create this policy manual, well, actually revise this policy manual, so it better suits the uh needs of the the community requesting for these types of assistances. The proposed Burial Assistance and General Assistance Policy Manual is based on and consistent with the twenty-five CFR Part Twenty for Financial Assistance, which is attached as Appendix A. The burial assistance provides funds to assist with burial expenses of deceased indigent tribal members whose estates do not have sufficient resources to meet federal funeral expenses, sorry. The general assistance provides financial assistance payments to eligible tribal members for essential needs of food, clothing, shelter, and utilities. And the goal of general assistance is to increase self-sufficiency. This is accomplished through specific steps an applicant uh takes to increase independence as outlined in his or her individual self-sufficiency plan or case plan. As an enrolled member of the Navajo Nation or other federally recognized tribe listed in the Federal Register, Volume eighty-seven, number nineteen of January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-two, um, they are eligible for burial assistance and general assistance, which is attached as Appendix A. The Navajo Nation's service delivery area are geographic areas listed in the Federal Register, Volume um number forty-four, number nine of January twelfth, nineteen seventy-nine, and that is attached as Appendix B. The client's information are protected consistent with the Navajo Nation Privacy and Access to Information Act, which is attached as Appendix B. And overall, the Financial Services Protocol is strike-through and the proposed amendment of the Burial Assistance and General Assistance Policy Manual is entirely underscored. The INFAS team are looking forward to an updated policy manual that will guide the burial assistance and general assistance in an effective, efficient, and uniform manner for eligible applicants and families. The INFAS team respectfully uh requests your support by passing Legislation zero one six eight dash twenty-two. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rian, and we'll turn it back over to Delegate Wanika.
Honorable Edison
Thank you, Chair. Uh, that that is our our presentation uh from uh Ms. Littleman and uh uh Ms. uh Matiba. So uh, I need to, I should, uh, there's a lot of underscore down here, eh, eh, I went through some of the um areas. My real concern was the the family, uh, Navajo Family Assistant Services, again, eh, we always have problems with it, but pretty much did all, ah, you see, over here, the, and the sheet, eh, yeah. So uh, I think they just uh realigned the the services that is needed by the people. Of course, I see that one, so case, okay, I don't know if there's any questions, Chair.
Of course, she la, uh, Honorable Wanika, committee members, any questions?
Chair.
The Honorable Vice Chair Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um I have a few questions and trying to scroll through the document right now. It looks like this is a much more streamlined assistance policy, which I think is good. If there is a lot of extraneous information in the last policy, which it looks like there was in this Financial Services Protocol. Um, some of the things I liked in it, though, were the identification of the customers' rights and the obligations of the employees in serving the clients, or I should say, not customer, the client. Um, and the articulation of the responsibilities for both of them, so in that respect, I'm not seeing that in here, maybe it is somewhere, but I haven't seen that within the new underscored policy. And um when you think about a client-oriented Navajo Nation program, I think that's a good set of items to keep in there because it really articulates what, you know, the employee should be doing and what clients can expect from the program. And also what rights they may have to seek some sort of redress if there's a um a conflict with whatever the determination is from the program, so tha- that's our comment right now, and I guess I'd like to hear some response on that. And then, second, there was a lot of telling, but not a lot of explanation. And I would appreciate more of an explanation on what this is accomplishing. I understand it's removing some items that don't need to be included any longer, or they were never funded, say, by the federal government, but um I guess this is a general criticism when programs bring suggested amendments to the committee is that they say, oh, it does this, but then you would never get an explanation of how it is accomplishing X or Y or Z. And we should receive that explanation, like here's our thesis statement, and here's three examples of what we're, how we're doing that, you know, something kind of like that. Um, so I'd appreciate a little bit more on that end. And then lastly, I would like to ask if this will impact the amount of financial compensation in any way that is made to families and estates after they've lost a loved one when they qualify for this program? Will this be affecting any funding determinations or eligibility determinations? So those three items right there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Slater. Um uh Honorable Edison Wanika, I guess, uh, um um, the agents presented a real um umbrella type of uh presentation. But what about the actual improvement of services to the clientele? What actually will occur? And and it just seems like part of the presentation talked about, you know, we did an amendment to the Division of Social Services Plan of Operation. And now we're going back and making another amendment to those same plans of operation. Because what they had recommended originally, they found themselves um to be entangling themselves. And now here's this amendment to say untangle us. That's what I see in more common language. Uh, Honorable Edison Wanika, have your agents respond to our comments and questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chair. I'll go ahead and defer to uh Ms. Littleman and uh Matiba.
Uh, thank you, um Chair So and Delegate Slater for um the comments and the questions. Um, so I am also looking through real quickly to see if um the client's rights and the staff responsibility are part of it. Um, so I'll respond to that one here a little shortly. Um, I'll give some examples, but I think Rian Matiba, I'll have her speak as well here after me. Um they're they're, I'll, for um the staff members, um and the different versions of the policies. Um, they, for example, it would say, um, do a follow-up, one policy will say thirty days, another will say follow-up in forty-five days. So the staff were adhering to different policies and and they were not consistent. And then um each offices were, you you know, also u- using various version, different versions of the policy and requiring different documentation from from the client. And and then in some cases, um, there were additional documentations that were really not required, but they were being requested of the clients. So we went back and looked at the twenty-five CFR twenty to to see what um what is, um, what do we need to verify um to determine eligibility for for the clientele. And so those are where some of the regions are.
Yeah.
Um, to make sure that we're requesting for documentation um in accordance to the twenty-five CFR twenty-five. Um, so those are the, um, and then another um example would be um where maybe one one office may be serving a client um in a certain service delivery area, whereas um another um staff member may not be serving clients in a certain service delivery area. So we really needed to clear up um um the the service delivery area for the staff um so that um the the services that are provided are consistent across the board. So I think that's where, um, those are just some of the the examples that um I can think of right off the bat, but Rian and her team, they work with the various, with the policy on a daily basis, and I think she can speak more to some of the um I I don't want to say challenges, but some of the um obstacles that they've um been faced with and 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 how they've been um addressing them. So I will um turn my time over to Rian. Rian?
Thank you, I'm Marlinda, um, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Um, in response to some of these questions, as I am looking at the document itself as well, um I am kind of seeing that a lot of the customer rights and responsibilities section is kind of um inserted in various sections of the the policy. Um to kind of give us a little bit more guidance on how to handle certain situations. And Ms. Marlinda Littleman is correct, uh, the program has um had its challenges uh within the past couple of years um in providing these assistances as we continue to move away from the um Department for Self-Reliance and Department of Family Services. Um, with that, and she is correct, we have had situations where um um employees, um INFAS workers at various locations um have been utilizing Department for Self-Reliance's old policy manual, uh, one that was um being presented prior to my coming on board um from previous supervisor at the time, Ms. Madalena Key, uh, which was not approved. So we run into issues when we're trying to address um clients, um um situations and applications and any any type of thing that they're disputing. We we kind of go back and forth in between various um policies, and it's not really um effective for this program because one says, like Marlinda said, you have thirty days, the other might have forty-five days, another might have ten days to respond, and it's not very helpful. The other thing that we run into is um how to handle the service delivery area, um, that really was not um um laid out, I guess, or pretty much detailed in the previous um policies. So we are trying to, with this policy, um, be more efficient or effective on how we are presenting um the way this program moves forward to help provide assistance to um our applicants. Um, the other issues that we do run into, especially for general assistance, is the length of time that um um a client can be assisted if they are unemployable or employable, there's a certain timeframe. Uh, we do also have been running back to the federal um Financial Services Protocol, which has different different um criteria. So what we're really trying to accomplish with this is to be more streamlined and more um up to date on what our 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 information is to our clients when we're providing the assistance that they per- um need. The other thing is that um there is no impact on the amount of financial estates. The uh funding determinations and eligibility, um, where, like I said, we're just trying to streamline everything so that everybody, uh, each applicant knows what documents um are acceptable. If a decedent, for example, doesn't have certain documents, what other items can we use to still provide the assistance? And we do get a lot of those cases on a daily basis. I've I've got several of them, actually, that I do need to address for appeals. So um those are some 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 types of issues that we run into. Um, as far as the amounts, um, that would be I know there was question from not only our clients, but from um I know there was question from not only our clients, but from political community representatives and questioning the amount of allowable allowance for each, each client. Currently, we allow or award two thousand five hundred dollars for a regular burial and we, or three thousand five hundred dollars for COVID-related burial. And more recently, we moved away from dictating what type of items a family can get during the, like the funeral package, the Navajo Nation package. We're moving away from that so that we're allowing our applicants to be to, to get what they want for their loved ones instead of getting the, the triby, triby package. We have heard those comments before. So the only issue that we're running into with BIA is that, yes, we can increase those amounts, however, it would have to, we would end up not being able to serve a lot of clients because the funding amount will remain the same. So there's a kind of a give and take. Do we want to allow our applicants to have additional funds and decrease our applicant listing or limitations? Or do we want to continue serving as many people that we can, but with a limited amount? So those are some of the things that we do have to consider in the future as well. I do hope that addressed all of your questions. Now we'll turn it back over to Merlinda.
Thank you, Rayanne. So that will be our response and if needed, we, you know, we can, we'll take the proper protocols to assure that the customer due process and employee responsibilities are clearly identified in the, in the policies. That will be our response. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Edison Winika, would that be responses from yourself as the sponsor?
Yes Chair, I appreciate the response by my agents. But one area that you asked a question, I'm very concerned about that portion of it to actual improvement of services to clientele. Sometimes the local staff, again, the staff that has immediate work that they do, yeah, sometimes they're not involved. So that will be our response, Chair.
Good, Sheila. Honorable Winika Committee Member, do you have any follow-up thoughts or comments and discussion, questions?
Chair Daniel So, this is Delegate Charles Newton.
Oh, yeah. Shiyaza. Thank you for being on the call. Since the committee hasn't responded, let me hang on. Honorable Vice Chair Slater, let me give you the floor. And then afterwards, then I'll defer to Honorable Chair Charles Newton.
Thanks Chair. I just want to ask for a couple of follow-ups and then make a comment. Well, I guess I'll start with the comment. I would like to request that we re-insert the language on the client rights. It doesn't have to be identical to what was there before, but maybe a revised version of that. And then maybe a basic explanation of the responsibilities of the program employees. I think that is very important to have a more customer service-oriented, client-focused program. And I think we'll, we'll have to table the legislation or refer it in order, well, I'm not sure we can refer it, but table it until we can obtain that language and then consider amending the legislation. In the eligibility determination section, which is number four, it lists social security card, CIB, birth certificate, identification card, income verification. And I wanted to hear from the program if they believe this is the broadest possible language in order to make it easier for the clients. And from what I see in this new language, this does seem to be a clearer and simpler set of guidelines. And so you know, just from my analysis, I would say good job to the program on doing something that will hopefully have consistency across the different areas that they provide assistance. But I, I want to know a little bit more on that and if they confront issues with different types of documentation and make sure that the way this is written is the broadest as possible to assist people. And then second, you know, is mentioned that, okay, there's a certain amount of funding that is provided every year from the BIA for this purpose. And the nation has decided to do the twenty-five hundred dollars of assistance. Has there been any analysis from pre-COVID to during COVID to the new normal that we're in now? On how far those dollars can go and what the potential unmet need may be for our people as they would qualify under this, under the federal guidelines? I'm interested in hearing that information. I think twenty-five hundred is the cheapest you can get from most of the funeral homes. And I don't know if that's tied directly into the federal programming or something else that they've decided to do on their own. But our committee, I know, has been very interested in the past and there's delegates on this committee who sponsored legislation to provide further assistance for our Navajo families who are grieving and dealing with loss. And moving forward, I don't know if there's a way that we could look at how to shore up assistance for those that we're not able to help under this criteria. And I had one more question, but I just lost it looking at the document. So I'll, I'll stop right there. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Vice Chair Slater. To sponsor Edison Winika, I guess, let me defer to Madam Chair Charles Newton before go back to you and your agents. Madam Chair Charles Newton, you have the teleconference.
Thank you Chair So. I appreciate you calling on me. I've been listening in on the HEP meeting for the last couple of hours. So it, you know, I've been getting some information, but I really, I was, I was more interested in in this part of the reporting, or I'm sorry, this, this part of the legislation. I know that a lot of our Navajo people are requesting burial assistance and that was also the case of course during COVID. And I was just reading through, you know, your policy manual. I appreciate the fact that you guys are stating that, you know, it's going to be kind of more client-centered. I see the difference in, I guess, what you had before, but also, you know, what you are presenting here. The, the one question, I know I did have a couple of questions, but Vice Chair Slater has asked a few of those questions. But I did notice that on your financial, your burial assistance, you know, you're talking about the eligibility to be determined, to be determined based on the income. And, and I understand that, you know, this, this, I guess, this service is going to require some type of income. So listening to, you know, to our people talking about what they have to go through for burial assistance, a lot of that was really weighed because of COVID. But I also am familiar with a lot of stories that people shared with me and many of them I was sending to you where people like family members were not able to get documents of those who are deceased. There was one story of an individual who, their house burned down, all of the documents, you know, had burned down. And it was like a week later when, you know, one of the, one of the people who lived in the home, they, you know, they, they, they passed away. And so they were having such a hard time getting all of the documents that were required by burial assistance. So what do you, and I just now read through your policy and I didn't see anything in there, but are there any exceptions in those situations? I think that as Navajo people, every single one of us can say that we all have relatives. You know, sometimes they're secretive, they don't share information with us, you know, and then, you know, heaven forbid, something happens and it's very difficult to, to get information. So what kind of exceptions does your office make in those situations? That's number one. Number two, as I know that you did say, you know, should we increase the amount and provide service to less people? But are, have you guys considered the fact that, you know, as you were hearing all over the news, we're seeing it, you know, we're seeing it with our grocery bills, but inflation has gone up. I just spoke to a funeral director, I attended a funeral on Friday and I spoke to one of the directors and, you know, he, he stated that, you know, it's really hard seeing families, you know, they want, you know, to bury their loved ones, but, you know, they're not getting very much assistance. And I know it made it very difficult for some families, you know, to, to have those normal, I guess, family, I guess, gatherings so that they can have funding because we still have mask mandates. We still have those, those requirements of social distancing. They are still in place. And some families are abiding by it. They still are making it very difficult for them to gather family members, you know, to plan a funeral. Some families, you know, are stepping away from it. I admit, as an elected official, you know, I'm stepping away from it because, you know, I mean, the whole country, I guess, is making it, it's not mandated anymore. And, you know, I, I pushed, I've been pushing since April to open back up to one hundred percent. That legislation still hasn't been written. And, you know, we've seen, you know, the Biden administration state that, you know, like this, you know, COVID pandemic is, is over. We're encouraging people to go get their shots. But at the same time, we also have to understand that there's some families that are still following that protocol. And again, it's making it really difficult for them to gather the funding that's needed to properly bury their, their family members. So that's another thing that, that I want to know is has the cost of assistance changed? And are we taking into consideration inflation? Because it, it is costing more to bury a person today than it was two or three years ago prior to the pandemic. So that's another question I have. My last question is, I didn't see within your policy, I know that there was something in, there was something about the transportation. Does that include, like, let's say, a person, you know, passes away in, I don't know, San Antonio? And they're out there, they're working and a family is here on the Navajo Nation. You know, I know that, I, I get a lot of families who reach out to me asking, you know, does the Navajo Nation assist with the transportation fees associated with bringing that, you know, Navajo person back here to the Navajo Nation for, for burial? I, I know that I have sent out emails and the response that I have received is no, we don't. The only time that transportation is covered is when Indian Health Services, IHS, has referred an individual out and, and they pass away at the hospital that they referred them to, then IHS does cover the cost of transport them back. However, and any other, you know, in any other situation, the family does become responsible. I know of one family, it took them almost six months to raise the funds to bring their father back from California. He passed away in California and the family, you know, it took them, I want to say it was about six months for them to raise the funds to bring them back here to the Navajo Nation and then they finally had a funeral service for the individual. So how are we helping Navajo or are, are we even helping our Navajo people when it comes to transportation? Those are my questions. I do appreciate Chair, Chair Daniel So, thank you for recognizing me. Again, I've been on the HEP call. I believe I got on like around ten twenty and I've been on the call listening in since then. Thank you.
With that, the Honorable Edison Winika, back to you.
Chair, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, thank you Chair. Appreciate the question by Honorable Vice Chair Slater and also questions from Madam Chair Charles Newton. So I will go ahead and defer to my agents, Ms. Lilliman and Ms. Mativa.
Thank you Delegate Winika. And also thank you Vice Chair Slater and Chair Charles Newton for your comments and questions. In regards to the recommended language to be inserted for client rights and employee responsibility, we will, we will consider, we will regroup our work group internally and take another look at those languages. And let's see. I will yield my time, some time to our, to one of our staff members, Rosalind Begay. She she wordsmiths a lot of the language in this policy. And I'll have her speak to the efforts we made to keep the language for the eligibility as broad and as flexible as we can so that we don't make it difficult for our clientele to take to get these services. But before I do, let me also just respond and say that we, we don't have like a report written in terms of an analysis of the costs for regular burial assistance and then also for the COVID nineteen. But we can provide a report with an analysis of our burial assistance expenditure pre-COVID and during COVID and into current. So we can provide that information and provide it when we come back before the Oversight Committee. And I will have Rayanne, when I give her some time here, respond to if, what we do in circumstances where documentations cannot be provided. So I'll have her provide the explanation on that. So I'll have her provide the explanation on that. In terms of the funding we get from BIA under the public law, 93, 638, we have been in communication with BIA, specifically Jane Jackson Bear. Those are the, the 2,500, to my understanding is the amount that they require us to, to assist with. And so if there would be any changes, we would have to go through the proper protocols, through our Director, Executive Director, and with the help of the Oversight Committee to make those changes. I'm thinking through legislation. So that, that's more at, at that level. So we would need your support to make those changes to, to the, to the amounts that are awarded. And, and then also I will have Rayanne talk a little bit more about the transportation costs. It is included in the revised policy, but she can speak to that better, better than I can. So let me yield my time to Rosalind Begay. I would like for her to explain her efforts in keeping the language general for the eligibility portion of the amended policy. Rosalind?
Good morning. Thank you, Marlinda. Good morning, Shunandai, or good afternoon, Shunandai. Shunai, Chair, so and members of the Health, Education and Human Services Committee and Legislative Staff and those who are on the call. I am Rosalind Begay. With regard to this policy manual revision amendment that, that the division is proposing to this body for consideration and approval. It is consistent with the 25 CFR Part 20 throughout the eligibility, throughout all the requirements, because these are federal funds. These two programs or services are funded with federal funds and federal funding. And then they're based on eligibility, they're income-based eligibility services. So not everybody qualifies for these two services. So that's why we have to maintain and remain in conformance with the federal requirements. And then the level of assistance is also mandated through the Indian Affairs Manual. And that lists burial assistance rate a maximum of 2,500 per burial. So that is also consistent, as, as you can see, that amount is not specified in the policy manual. Because that, that amount, this 2,500 could change anytime. Thereby, we did not list that in the policy manual. So again, the eligibility determination on your documents are written as broad as we can make it. And however, based on Delegate Charles Newton's information, we do know that there are situations where all the minimum required documents may be available. Thereby, we can, we can also look at creating or inserting a provision for exception, that situations that could be considered for, for those, an exception language. And working with our DOJ assigned attorney, we can go back to the drawing board and consider drafting a language that, that would be, that would take care of those, those types of situation. Thank you, Marlinda. Back to you.
Thank you, Rosalind. And then I will turn the time over to Rayanne Mativa to provide clarification on the exception of, or the documentation, if documentations are not available, how the program handles that and then also the transportation costs. Rayanne?
Thank you, Marlinda, and Rosalind, and the members of the committee. Good questions. And I, I do see those concerns as we continue to assist applicants on a daily basis in response to, I guess, to further give clarification on some of the issues that Rosalind and Marlinda had already addressed in response to the income verification and the broad interpretation. We're trying to make sure that we do continue providing assistance to low-income families and those who do need the assistance as we are a financial services program for Navajo people. So we do try to make sure that we're not cornering ourselves to certain types of eligibility criteria so that we can be as broad as possible to assist as many applicants as possible. The questions that Ms. Chair Newton brought up for documentation exceptions, we do run into issues like that. What we're trying to do is find other ways of working with other programs that do have these types of documentation within their, their, their files. Majority of our applicants do request for LIHEAP services, CSPG, LIWOP. In what we're, we've been doing as well as school coding. So what we're doing is keeping copies of those files. So at any chance that there is a situation where a decedent's documents have been lost in an unfortunate event, then we will look in our files to see if that, if that decedent has applied for any of our services and pull those documents so that we at least can provide the assistance needed. What we're also trying to do is collaborate with other Division of Social Services programs that decedents may have applied for in the past, so that we can request for documents through them. And then we are also working with other Navajo Nation programs. For example, the Census Office, they're usually good about providing documents to our INFAST employees, especially for Census CIB records. In the event the applicants cannot find those documents. We also, for example, birth certificate, there is a form, a document that we can apply or either the applicant can apply through the state to get a copy of that or even copies of the death certificate. So we do look at other ways internally to provide these assistances to eligible families. And then we do make sure that we can work with and collaborate with other programs to, to also make some of the burdens, I guess, lessen some of those burdens as, as much as we can. And then the transportation costs that is indicated on page two of the policy manual. Number four, transportation costs directly associated with burial are normally a part of the established rate. If a funeral home or mortuary adds an additional transportation charge to then burial rate of extenuating circumstances, then INFAST can pay the added charge. To pay the added charges, as noted above, prior approval will be required for which an INFAST worker must ensure and document in the case plan that A, the charges are reasonable and equitable, B, the deceased was an eligible indigent, indigent tribal member, tribal member who was socially, culturally and economically affiliated with his or her tribe, and C, the deceased resided in the service delivery area for at least the six months, six consecutive months of his or her life. So we do provide transportation costs. If the client did not live within the service delivery area, we usually just request for any type of documentation that ties them back to the Navajo Nation so that we can still provide assistances that they need. And we do provide the transportation costs if necessary. And that will be the end of my responses. Marlinda?
Thank you, Rayanne. We'll turn it back over to Delegate Winika. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlinda. Chair, that's our response to the questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Winika. From the Chair's view, in adopting proposed amendments, what I would like to see is a standard of application. Because what I, in, in concert with Chair Charles Newton, many issues arise depending on how a particular social worker handles the case. And a lot of it, I feel like, is at the discretion of the social worker. And, and there has to be a standard practice. And what really troubles me is from 2007 to now, you've had issues with the date. And, and you finally bring it to the committee to say, give us a certain date. And the Director and other folks within the administration of the Division of Social Services have been in their positions of responsibility for most of four years. So that's really troubling. The other is, one, the people that are experiencing the loss, that are dealing with grief, and, and, you know, general mental health issues, they're told you can't raise money on Facebook, Zelle and other platforms. Where in the current policies, where in CFR is that prevented? And what I'm, what I'm, I guess, in the presentation, I'm seeing a lack of input from the Department of Justice Attorney. And in, in that aspect, then the other part, when will the Division of Social Services renegotiate the terms of the contract to basically negotiate for a higher level of funeral assistance? A higher level of assistance through general assistance? Honorable Chair Edison Winika, those are the comments and questions I posed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate those questions. I do agree with the concerns that the committee members have. I'd like to defer the, the questions to Ms. Mativa.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. So in response to some of those questions, the, we are looking at standardizing the practice, as I had mentioned earlier. We, I just recently came on last year. I know that the previous supervisor was trying to get policies in place as we were being moved out of Department, our Department Force Off Alliance as well as under, away from Department of Family Services. Those types of services that we provide has been not consistent with those two programs, which is the whole purpose why they're moving us out and away from that. So I agree with you, it has been quite some time. And I can't speak to why these were not addressed at those times from previous supervisors. But right now, we are trying to standardize the practice with our current staff as well as our locations, so that we're all, are all on the same page when we're providing this information to our, our applicants. And there are certain things that were put in place, I understand that are, I know are not in policy, but by certain individuals who are no longer with the program. And we are moving away from that. The comment about not being able to fundraise and provide that information, we do not support that. We are pulling away from that. We have total, let our staff know that that is not in policy and that should not be imposed on any applicants. So at this point, we are not making that a requirement for applicants to disclose that information to us. It's really just basically the type of income the decedent was receiving at the time of, of death. So that could be SSI, general assistance, which is all that we're really requiring. There is a set of acceptable forms of income that we do follow, which is listed in one of the appendixes. So that, I, like I said, I do agree, there are some things that were put in place by the caseworkers who are no longer here and we are working diligently to strike that from this program. However, we cannot change that type of information that these previous employees are still providing to their community members because they used to work with the program. This is what they are presenting to their family members, therefore still putting in the light that this is the way INFAST operates when in fact it is not. So those are areas that we are, like I said, with this policy trying to address so that we can have a better way of providing assistances to our service programs, our, our clients, sorry. And also, as Marlinda had mentioned, the, in order for us to change the amount, to advocate for that, we need your support. It's really not something that we can do on our end, because I have asked, I have inquired with Jane Jackson Bear, I have inquired along with Deanna Neswudgishy in regards to how we can do this. And that was the response they gave us. Jane Jackson Bear is, is our representative from the BIA. And from what she had noted to us or disclosed to us is it would have to be an act of Congress to increase those amounts. Especially if we wanted to advocate for additional funding. So it would really be at the higher level and that's where we need you guys' support for sponsorship to get that going. Until then, we have a limited amount of funds that is awarded to the program. And like I said, internally, we can change it, but And like I said, internally, we can change it, but that doesn't um change the amount that we're going to receive. So we have to make, take into consideration with the amount of uh funds available. Um, if we're going to continue serving as many people as we can or limited, limit that amount on how many people we can serve throughout the Navajo Nation. We have thousands of people that apply for our services, not only burial assistance, not only general assistance, but also um lhi, liwop, liwop, um and CSPG and school clothing. So we do our best, our little small program does our best to to um assist all of these applicants applying for all of those services. So with that, I will leave that as my response. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh Ms. Mativa. I don't know, uh Ms. Littleman, do you have any additional information uh regarding the questions?
Uh, thank you, Delegate Wenika. Um, I guess just one comment to add um in in regards to DOJ's input. Um, our staff member, Rosalind Begay, um she has um work with Latonya Johnson, who is our assigned attorney um in in reviewing um the policy and determining it legally sufficient. So um there is um review and input from from DOJ. I just wanted to add that comment as well. Um, thank you, Delegate Wenika. Back to you.
All right. Thank you, uh Ms. Littleman. Uh Chair, uh that's our response to the question.
Thank you, committee members. Honorable Vice Chair Slater, do you still want to motion to table this pending um uh revised language in certain sections of this uh proposed uh plan of operation?
Chair, I would motion to table for no longer than forty-five days to develop the language by the program and report it back to us in amendment form. So hopefully it'll be sooner than that, but I think that should be enough time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Slater. Committee members, do I hear a second? Delegate Paul Begay will second. Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay. Um in in um regards to this um motion to table, uh has there actually been like public outreach on the proposed changes? In all of the programs, uh lhi, funeral assistance, the funeral assistance, and then the other one, the new one about the water, water fees, uh can't remember the exact acronym. Because it is client-based, I really feel like we uh should address that as um those aspects. However, um again, if it's not the policy of Division of Social Services not uh to um require matching funds, I think there has to be general public notice because there has been widespread effect. I know within um the emails that I've received, there are hundreds of folks that were told don't fundraise, otherwise you become ineligible. And right now, you know, and then the other part is just the fact that under FEMA, there was uh the governmental rate, five thousand. And so those aspects, I think, uh at some point in time. And that's where I'm asking for DOJ input. When is the time to renegotiate this six thirty-eight um contract? And when was the last time it was negotiated? We realize it's a an executive uh branch uh function. And uh right now, because of the rising costs, um on the committee, I feel like we we need to say let's renegotiate. The other is since uh Congress basically is doing a limited uh continuing resolution, what is the availability of funds? Has the Division of Social Services been given a document basically say operate at this particular level of funding? Those are some uh real pertinent information. And if we could get a written report regarding that, but uh in addition uh moving parties, that would be an ask from the Chair to include in the motion.
I'll I'll include that in my motion.
Mm-hmm. Honorable Vice Chair, uh Honorable Paul Begay.
Ero.
Okay. Uh, second to the motion consent with that, uh Ms. uh Chi, could you provide the roll call vote on this motion to table?
Chair, roll call vote to table zero one six eight hyphen twenty-two. Honorable Paul Begay Junior, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wenika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Wenika votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona? Chair, you have three in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Halona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Chair, you have four in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, committee members and sponsors. Honorable uh Edison uh Wenika, we tabled this uh legislation up to forty-five days. If the agents in the division and Department of Justice have um the requested amended language available sooner, the we can address it sooner. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, the item uh the next legislation.
Yes.
Zero one eight four dash twenty-two.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Um, you have your seven B legislation number zero one eight four dash twenty-two. It's a uh proposed standing committee resolution, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, fourth year, two thousand twenty-two, introduced by uh Council Delegate Allen uh Key Allen Begay Junior as primary sponsor. Tracking number is zero one eight four dash twenty-two and action relating to Health, Education, and Human Services, Navi Gia Kit Committee and Navajo Nation Council, reaffirming resolutions N A B I N dash sixty-nine dash eighteen, N A B I M Y dash twenty-seven dash nineteen, and N A B I A U dash twenty-five dash twenty-one, requesting a tribal communication with the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs to es- establish direct services on the Navajo Nation for Navajo veterans. The legislation does move on to the Navi Gia Kit Committee and the Navajo Nation Council after the Health, Education, and Human Services um considers the legislation. There is a um memorandum um attached, and it has exhibits one, N I D L A U dash twenty-five dash twenty-one, along with exhibit A is um N A B I N dash sixty-nine dash eighteen, and exhibit B is N A B I M Y dash twenty-seven dash nineteen. Exhibit two is a consultation and communication with federally recognized Indian tribes regarding the Department of Veterans Affair, Washington, DC. And it's the, it indicates a VA directive. And also um eh by the direction of Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Morris C. Sullivan, Assistant Secretary for Public and in intergovernmental affairs. And it indicates VA Directive eighty, number eighty-six dot eighty-six zero three. Also, um it's a transmit a letter from the Office of Legislative Council. Also, the document had, the legislation has been posted to for public comments um as of September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and the uh five-day comment period ended October fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and no comments were received. Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, uh Council Delegate uh Key Allen Begay, who's sponsoring this legislation, is on the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Uh committee members, do I hear a motion?
I'll motion. Delegate Slater.
Motion by Honorable Motion by Honorable Vice Chair Slater, do I hear a second? Committee members, even if the um committee does not a- act on this legislation, it moves on to Navi Kia Kit because the committee is not the final authority.
Second.
Second by Honorable Edison Wenika. Do we have any questions for our sponsor, Sir Che, Honorable Key Allen Begay? I think we're all this is the second round of the same legislation. I think the in- initial ones were passed in twenty nineteen, and this is follow-up legislation. Committee members, any questions, comments? If not, then uh Ms. Karen Chi, roll call vote, please. And thank you to Che Key Allen Begay, stay and stay and after it. I'm on the line now, Chair. Oh. Ms. Chi, go ahead and do the roll call vote.
Okay. Chair, roll call vote for legislation number zero one eight four hyphen twenty-two. Honorable Paul Begay Junior, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wenika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Wenika votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Halona votes red.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes red. Honorable Paul Begay Junior, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Chair, you have three in favor, one opposed, and Chair not voting. Chair?
Thank you, committee members. Ado, Sir Che, Key Allen Begay. Um I'll sign the committee report tomorrow morning in the window up. Be a- available to the Nabi Committee if you wish to pursue it at tomorrow's meeting.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ado, committee members. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. Day after, Sir Che, like I said. Okay, uh, Ms. Benali. That concludes our uh agenda item seven uh and takes us on to um item number eight, closing meeting, announcements, and adjournment. Ms. Benali, have you heard back from Mr. Begay, Dr. Begay, or Dr. Moffick on the work session?
Yes, um, Mr. Chair and members of the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee. I'm looking through my email, and I don't see a response that I've received uh from them as of uh this hour. But I will um continue to, I'll probably call them after the meeting and um see if I can get ahold of them.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Benali. All right. Committee members, any announcements?
Chair, huh?
Honorable Halona.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I may have an announcement. I wanted to see what I can do about making uh getting the uh um having to clearly come up to uh uh Wolf Creek Ranch, Wolf Creek Springs, the uh owner of the uh ranch here in Colorado. I don't know if that would be something that the committee would want, but I think that uh in in light of the 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 location and the ranch and the size, I think uh it would benefit the committee and all the members to come and see what we have, what we own here in Colorado, at Wolf Wolf Springs Ranch. Chair?
Honorable Halona, have you become a rancher?
I've become everything so far.
Are you up there now?
Yeah, I came up there to check out the ranch, just uh to see what the uh location looked like, and uh um it's it's a twenty-thousand acre ranch, and um I do have cattle and uh uh heard of buffalo's here. And uh it's it's something to see that Navajo Nation would really need to uh uh give a look at. Chair?
Oh, you're part of the RDC contingent, then?
Yeah, I got invited to come up and look at it, so I should be able to pick it up.
Okay, that was your announcement. Committee members will consider it at another time.
They'll get Paul Bigay.
So, Sir Che, Honorable Paul Bigay.
Thank you, Sir Che, Chair and Vice Chair of Navajo. Members of our, let's say, committee. But three different families have contacted me. A couple of days ago, drove all the way from Coal Mine Mesa to here just to see me. Most, mainly we have a lot of elders that still own horses, cattle, and sheep. We are very much in need of more rangers. Because having a grazing official is not enough. What is happening out there is like old-time cattle rustling. They come onto another area of land, and they rope these cattle. They are very, they plan very technically. And they quickly surround cattle, rope, and drag them into the trail. The family that I talked to two weeks ago and I will not, I'll try not to name places and names of people or anything. But it was transported about fifty miles from where cattle was loaded. And there, state brands were placed on them. Some neighbors around there noticed that was going on. It was on Facebook. So this family alerted the family that lost the cattle. Maybe because they were reported, or they returned the cattle, but with a state brand. They're mainly there. But they're basically not, in no condition to be chasing people like that, that do things like that. These are happening in Western Navajo, I'm sure other areas also. This is coming winter time. It's when they go out and catch these cattle because visibility is low.
Those members of HES committee.
It's a very dangerous thing right now because elders are being threatened. So, and then there was another case where it was taken right before. Watch them, the elders just watched their animal being taken because those people knew that they won't do anything. Maybe we can get a direction how we can address it. There was out there sheep or anything. It was like you know, your possessions, the things that you own is gone.
Yeah, lots of Che. Do we still have Ms. Lawyer Henderson on the call? Committee members, what we'll do is make contact with Chief Legislative Counsel to see how we can put this issue on the HES agenda. The other Che, perhaps at tomorrow's Navajia Kit committee meeting, we can also address it as part of a report. And not this, and requests, yes, who is this on the call?
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for interrupting. This is Dana.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Barbara. Thank you for having ears everywhere.
Yes, I'm not sure where Ms. Henderson is, and I did not catch all of Delegate Bigay's his statement and what he was saying. So I'm not sure what the question is, but if you could recap it real quickly, I think I can help you out.
Okay. Basically, he's got constituents that have reported to him that there are in no uncertain terms, people stealing livestock out in the areas where the elders are the still caretakers of the land and caretakers of the livestock. And more than likely, the grazing area holders. There are folks that are basically coming and stealing cattle. And the question is, can the HES committee request a report? From, from the Division of Natural Resources, most specifically the Rangers.
Absolutely, yes. And absolutely, yes. The Rangers can come and report. The Rangers should, during that report, very specifically include what a constituent or a Navajo member or whoever thinks that their livestock are being rustled, how they are to report it, and how they get, and how they can receive feedback on what, what steps the Rangers have taken and such. I do know that there are, I don't have them in front of me, but there are very specific, very specific code provision as well as, I believe, some regulations on rustling. So, yes, you absolutely can have a report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And Honorable Paul Bigay, will have Ms. Angelita Benali reach out to Division of Natural Resources and run down to Rangers provide a report. And I guess the other part is, how then could we coordinate a report with over on the eastern side, it's Land Board, Grazing Committee members. Those two parties.
Yes. There. Thank you. Thank you for that response. The other issues, I think, is the land. People believe that they have a portion of the land. If I can get a name of a person that that is in, from one of these, our departments, that can talk with the couple that have talked to me twice so far. The gentleman, the elderly man, has a lot of documents, documented cases where things like that happen. Although he also has pictures that he has shown me, shown the brand that was placed on his cattle. We can't seem to find anybody. If there's a person that can go see this elderly couple, maybe they can sit down and talk more specifically on what has happened in their case, in their issue. And here, I mean, they drove over an hour and a half just to come see me and tell me about it. They named all these things that seem to be very well educated on, you know, his rights and things like that. Maybe if I can have a name of a person that they can talk to, perhaps something what happened. Your Ranger, eat them. I don't know how many Rangers we have on the nation and how many cover the western area. We haven't seen a Ranger or anything.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Bigay. Ms. Angelita Benali, if we could have you interact with Mr. Rodney Tahie, who's the advisor for RDC, to get the specific information about one, who the Grazing Committee representative is for the area that Honorable Paul Bigay is talking about, as well as the range enforcement officer, who covers that particular area. And I think Honorable Paul Bigay referenced Coal Mine Mesa. So, in that aspect, if we could have that outreach to be made.
I'll reach out to the, I guess, range enforcement under the DNR and have them give a report. And I think that from that information, we could, the committee can ask questions, and Delegate Bigay can indicate his request. I guess for their department to look into that situation. Because HES is not the oversight for DNR and the Department of Ag and the range enforcement. We'll have to wait, we're gonna probably have to wait for their report. But I think some questions, such as if there were any reports already submitted about the situation and to, in which office was it submitted to? We would need that information so that the report, the presenters of the report can give specific answers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. I guess in the way that Honorable Paul Bigay basically put it is, it's a form of elder abuse. The landholders, the ones that basically hold the document, ones that are still on the land or being intimidated. And so that is of major concern.
Okay, I got it.
And again, as the Chief Legislative Counsel basically said, yes, the committee can call for a report. And so we'll invoke that particular advice. Honorable Chair Charles Newton, you're texting me that you want to speak. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just sent over to Olive, actually to Chair So, Vice Chair Carl Slater, and also to Paul Bigay and Ms. Dana Barbara, the issue regarding cattle rustling. We did have that, we did have a presentation given at Law and Order Committee several months ago on this very issue. Actually, I think it was maybe even almost a year ago. Delegate Paul Bigay, so you know, wrestling is with under Section three thirty, it's considered to be best. under, um, subsection three thirty, it's considered to be theft. Um, the people that, who have compressed charges against the individual for, um, Prosecutor Vernon Jackson, and what was given to us at that time was to let Vernon Jackson know that this, um, that this police report was taken. That way, he will look after the cattle rustling, uh, against the police report and file charges accordingly. I did send that email out, again, to, uh, Chair Daniel So, Vice Chair Carl Slater, um, to Dana, and then also to Delegate Paul Begay as an option, um, in terms of addressing the issue. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Chair Daniel So.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Charles Newton. Uh, so we, we will, um, um, address it as soon as possible after the, uh, Navajo Nation Council, um, fall session. Um, we, we do have to deal with the law that no committee can meet during the council session, so it has to be days afterwards. Perhaps, uh, October twenty-five, if necessary. The next day would be the regular meeting. Committee members, those are some thoughts to ponder. With the other committee members? Okay, if, if there's no other discussion, then that would be an agenda item for October twenty-sixth. Receive a report from Division of Natural Resources, Range Enforcement Program, and, um, let's include Prosecutor, uh, Vernon Jackson in the discussion. Thank you, committee members. With that, the chair is open for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, they'll get Paul Begay.
Okay, thank you. I'll recommend second by Honorable, uh, Vice Chair Slater. Motion to adjourn entails no discussion, no comment, uh, let's go to a vote. Uh, Ms. Karen Chi.
Chair, roll call vote. Honorable Paul Begay Junior, how do you vote?
They'll get Paul Begay, vote green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior, vote green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater, vote green. Honorable Purnell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Edison J. Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Purnell Halona, how do you vote? Chair, you have three in favor, zero opposed, and chair not voting. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Chi. Committee members, be safe out there. You're on the road, travel safely. And to folks, uh, on the call, thank you for your attendance, and to staff, thank you for, um, all the work you do for for us as the Oversight Committee. Uh, we are adjourned at one thirty-one PM.